Wow. They thought it was hilarious. I was like, oh, I got this. It was just my thrill. I didn't know that. I don't think I was. I had to.
Perfect. If you need it done.
Too busy.
She went to the doctor. She had to go to the. She started the first shot. So she didn't move her eye.
I think you got stuff. We woke up for about ten days. Wow, that was awesome. So we got it.
Yeah.
I have a little test.
Been a bit of a work.
It was too. Back in the day. I want to. I'll bet you're right.
I know what. It's all down the valley. On both sides of the valley. Well, I wonder if one side can be made up for it. Okay. Is it six thirty or all those? Any sort of regular values board meeting? Board, this staff will.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we have one addition to the agenda. And that is five F. And so we will leave the motion. Agenda as modified, please.
I'll make motion the, uh, whose agenda is okay.
Second. Then move second in discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. All right. Personnel, approve higher Carl Smith, director of transportation.
I move the board higher Carl Smith, the director of transportation.
Second.
Then move in second in discussion.
I'm just gonna start.
Yeah, sorry. Well, we'll finish this when we, we're gonna have to jump back one. Okay. No discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Uh, for the record, I abstained on that. All right. Cause I can't keep crap. We need to, uh, consent agenda. Um, actually. You get that one.
Give me the motion to approve the modified agenda, so.
I think the motion covered the modification.
The motion covers it all.
Correct. That's how I see it.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Just the consent agenda was I.
Cause we have, yeah, we only have.
We have to have a motion to approve the modification? Is that the question?
Oh, do you mean the modified agenda?
We. Can you read what the motion was? Just to make sure we got that.
I move it second to. To approve the changes.
Okay, so. All right, so the correct terminology would have been, I move the board approve the consent agenda as modified. And so we need to back up and actually. Rephrase it.
I move the word approve the consent agenda tomorrow.
Second.
Move in second in discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, motion carries. And thank you. Okay, so now we are down to five. B, approve higher Amber Hadia, bus driver.
I move the board higher Amber Hadia, bus driver. Second.
Then move in second in discussion. No discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. C, accept resignation, Sue Holt, teacher.
I move the word accept resignation, teacher Sue Holt.
Second.
Then move in second in discussion. No discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item D, accept resignation, Vicki Purdue, bus driver.
I move the board accept the resignation of bus driver Vicki through.
Second.
Then move in second in discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Approve unpaid leave, Marina Smith.
I move the board approve the unpaid leave request of teacher Marina Smith.
Second.
Then move in second in discussion. For.
There's actually a chance for India or Andrew Briggs. A couple of days prior to that.
Anything else?
Excluded.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Item F, five F, accept resignation, Diane Madison, bus driver.
I move the board accept the resignation of bus driver Diane Madison.
Second.
Then move in second in discussion. I might add that I've taken many, many trips to many different places when I was coaching. And Diane's probably one of the best drivers. Literally. Of all of them. And I'm included, she's very good.
How about that?
Anything else? Right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Uh, no public comment. And finished business, A, twenty. Robert Torpa, WIAA representative.
Move the board appoint Robert Torpa as WIAA representative. Second.
Then move in second in discussion. Uh, I might add that if anybody's wondering why I'm doing that, I'm a WASDA representative to the WIAA. And each board should have a representative that represents this board to the WASDA representative that represents WASDA to the rep. Okay, I guess I would say. So we really didn't actually have one after Gil, uh, retired. And so that's what this is about. I obviously will be abstaining. Any discussion?
Well, I think it only makes sense for you to hold that position since you're holding the Washington position.
I appreciate that. Anything else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, approve WASDA policies. Twenty-four, twenty-four, forty, forty-two sixty, sixty-seven hundred, fifty-two eighty, forty-two fifteen, twenty-three thirty-six, thirty-four sixteen, and twenty-two fifty-five.
I will just ask if there are any that you would like to look at or have me elaborate on. I have them loaded up. If you have any questions from the material that I sent out. So are we open on the thought? I recommend the E approval.
I move the board approve the following policies. Two zero two four, four two six zero, six seven zero zero, five two eight zero, four two one five, two three three six, three four one six, and two two five five.
Second.
Then move in second in further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item E, new business. Prove senior class trip. We love this over here.
There needs to be a.
Kind of talking to him and making him sweat. Squirt a little bit, right?
Absolutely.
Okay. Take it away.
All right, so I'm the president of the president of the class in fourteen. This is Katie Wilson, she's the treasurer. No, secretary. Uh, we represent the class to, uh, show you guys what you hope for your seniorship. I hope you guys will improve it. All right, so we had to do it Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, which is June first, which is the third because of that Oregon state track is actually that Friday, Saturday. So the seniors are on state track. It's gonna meet up with the rest of the seniors to go straight up the seniorship. Uh, so let's do that. This department is set at seven AM. We'll go to the Mariners versus Tigers game at about one o'clock. And then after that, we'll head to the mall for some dinner and shopping. And then we'll go back to Tacoma for a quick hour of the day.
What is your load of transportation?
Uh, we're looking at that right now. We looked at how much it costs to take a school bus. And then we also contact with Renting Vance, overnight store yet. So we're still figuring that out. We're looking at the exact pricing on those.
On the second day, just to make our main activities that we're going to do is, um, paintballing the X place market and head to the Seattle underground tour. And then we'll go back to Tacoma and go to our.
Uh, Tuesday, the final day of our trip. We have the part for, uh, family fun center. Just kind of fun, just has roller coasters, go karts, and just kind of an array of stuff. Event to these. Then we'll, uh, head to Cabela's for some shopping. Go to Red Robin for dinner, which we also do our, our H-3. And then we'll head home after midnight.
And following people are, are shoppers.
Not sure about this one.
Uh, so we've done different sorts of fundraising over the last four years to pay for our seniorship. Uh, we had two years of flamingo relocation. If somebody invited that flamingos in VR. Uh, two years of winter concert sales. And then we've done concessions at sports events for the last four years.
That's it.
Three minutes?
Uh, two minutes. We go Sunday, Monday, Tuesday. Yeah.
In, in that, did it say where you were staying? Did I see that?
It's, uh, we don't exactly.
Red line. Red line in Seattle?
Got to go. We'll be going back to Tacoma for a chat. So here's the best group.
The number?
Uh, seventeen.
You taking lots of pictures?
A lot of pictures.
Could you take one for me at Iton Place Market? Of Indy throwing rob a fish. Also, when you go to Cabela's, I like the blue fox spinners.
So what day were you exactly planning to skip then?
Uh, well, we understand that since we're doing overnight trip, our classes not doing senior stay. Uh, senior skip day.
That'd be a good idea because then we wouldn't need to go.
Yeah.
That's usually been kind of the deal, you know? We'll allow these overnight trips because they're pretty, they're pretty cool. If you promise not to be skipping on us one day. You know, the school is still liable for you. So if you go skipping out on us someday, then Karen's running around and John trying to figure out how we're gonna rally y'all up. Just kind of put the school in kind of a situation that we just do not care. I don't think John really wants to be running around on you. Or Karen. Well. Anything else from the board? Got to grill a lot harder than that.
You guys keep that little nose. Yeah.
So you two are gonna be responsible for everybody there.
I tell you about our scene of sneak. We called the sneak then, you know, but it was actually the jet. But we just won't go. We had a bus that broke down.
Hell, that was not happening.
It was not. On the hill in Seattle somewhere, that's all I remember. There you were stuck. The bus driver was incompetent. He liked to burn the clutch out right in the middle of the hill.
It wasn't one of ours, right?
No, it was, uh, it was a, uh, tour of us. What do you call it? Higher class. Anyway, okay. Anything else you guys would like to add to that?
You guys have any more questions?
I don't have any. I think that I will entertain a motion and leave.
I move the board approve the two thousand fourteen senior class trip.
I'll second it.
Then move in second in further discussion. No further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Have fun and be safe, right?
Very much.
Okay, new business, item B. Senior, uh, recipient of college board in teachers of critical language program, Grant. France. For the Mandarin program.
I move the board to acknowledge receipt of the college board of TCLT, Commander Brett. Francis.
A second.
Then move in second in discussion.
Does this put us within that twenty-five thousand dollars cap even? Or do we need, still need to commit on the parts amount of distance?
We should. We need this year's basically repeat last year.
So is there a set amount for this or does it just cover whatever the cost is for teaching? Is that teachers paid for?
No, there's a set amount. Twenty-six, six something. The other one doesn't cost anything.
So basically. Pays for the teacher's room for two.
Well, part of the movement board is subsidized by the on bond. So it's not, we don't pay extra for that. We keep that covered. Operating needs.
Anything else from the board? Then move in seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, approve purchase of. Light speed sound amplification system, FTE thirteen thousand five hundred dollars. Entertainer motion on this, please.
I move the board approve purchase of light speed amplification system not to exceed thirteen thousand five hundred.
Second. Then move in second in discussion.
So we got Planet Light Speed System very well.
Karen, you probably could answer that.
Planet, uh, you.
Light speed.
The light speed system.
Um, if you consider a teaching system for classroom so that the teacher's voice is amplified throughout. Um, if you look, you can, um, say for this room, we have to let you in the gym. Um, there's a device which will allow you to come by his voice throughout the gym as well. Because it's very challenging, particularly in a large area. You can use classrooms for students to talk to. And it also affords an opportunity for students to, um, hear like a person's agency. So they have a device that they cast. Now it's an alternative we could learn rather than just the teacher being there. Or maybe things to say around that. So it really should answer. And we want to, for example, you know, we have classrooms that sound like this. With that hum and the buzz and some teachers have allergy problems and have a good fire going. It does impact the quality of instruction. And we saw in the researches that I have and, um, those were huge improvements in making that classroom.
Sounds like you could do that.
That's what I said in, well, the grant funded outside of the classroom because I thought of this. But it's actually for twelve systems.
Okay, so this is a grant or something?
Twelve's from the rural. Not what someone to apply for, but they let us use it for that.
Okay, so the district is paying for any of those.
Well, the district is paying for through those funds. We have a lot of latitude on how we choose to use them.
Anything else from the board, please? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Prove twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen highly capable program plan.
I move the board approve the two thousand fourteen, fifteen highly capable program.
Second.
Then move in seconded, uh, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. The item E is approve board superintendent operating principles.
I move the board approve the board superintendent operating principles. Second.
Then move in seconded, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Approve board goals twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen.
I move the board to approve the twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen board goals.
Second.
Then move in seconded, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, business office report. All right, so first let's start with the enrollment, uh, for March. The K twelve school, uh, three hundred and seventy-five FTE, um, CBA two hundred and thirty-five point seven one FTE. And so enrollment seemed pretty steady. Not a, not a huge amount of change there. We ended the month with just over five hundred thousand dollars reserves. We're gonna start collecting, uh, first of the levy revenues. Just not, it's, we all want taxes to come in yet. And so from this point on, the reserve should, uh, be jumping up quite a bit, you know, through August. I remember that May and June are actually low unfortunately. And so there will be, there could be a slight dip there, but, um, July and August is when we receive the bulk of our portion. So that, that will go up there. And so, you know, nothing, uh, nothing drastic with, uh, budget report. State auditor has basically wrapped up. She was on site for, uh, over a week, two weeks. And then, uh, looking at all kinds of different programs. She's been offsite wrapping things up. And I believe our exit, um, conference is gonna be by telephone because there weren't any issues that she found. So it's gonna be by telephone on the twenty-third, I believe. And so we'll be wrapping that up. And that's a three-year audit. So, um, there will not be another state audit of that type for three years. So, um, the only other audits we can have is if we exceeded five hundred thousand dollars in federal revenues. If we, that would generate a federal audit. Or if there was an alternative private audit. That's it.
We do have CBA.
Same thing, yeah. I actually got a, so we got a letter a little over a month ago that informed us to get ready for an ALB audit. But I showed that to our auditor when she was here. And she thinks that that's kind of a state wide data collection audit. Cause we had to upload a lot of data to the auditor's office. And she doesn't think that there's gonna be anyone on site to do an audit. But, uh, anyway, I got it very well. I'm sorry. That's all I have to report. Thank you. Nice job. Well, done a field. Yeah, done a field. Okay.
Teachers out there who are similar to Andy and Sandy who participated in Washington State checking for an application for, um, competition as well. That's where I'm struggling for. And it was, you know, volunteer, um, people. Better set up team, this team, and we set up a rush on the fellows. And they had DDM as well participating. And so again, they stayed at their school with those students for three weeks. And they were telling them how to learn poetry and songs. And so they were not the men that performed. And there were four kindergarten students and four first graders. It's been four thousand and seventy actually. And they sang a song altogether. And then each of the first graders was signed with two coins in the manager. And, uh, that was an individual competition. And two of our students, the, uh, team, uh, placed first. And, like, um, of your level was placed third in the poetry, individual poetry competition. And that's pretty, um, impressive because there were five hundred and ninety contestants from a hundred and forty-eight schools with seven hundred and forty-one entries. So it's remarkable that two of our own. And, uh, organizers are that, we make key organizers with the organization as we take and, um, force the I and the O approaches. We will be having testing starting the, actually the NSP will begin last week if we will. And now we can bring three to eight, both of the writing, um, math and science. It was, it's five to eight. And then, um, we'll pick up five, twelve, uh, six, fifteen, sixteen. We'll have ITBS, first and second grade, and ITED for the ninth grade. Now, both are required tests, but we like to register that so that we have a basis for, um, so, so we achieve them. And they look well for, um, utilizing different programs. Call upon, so I give, uh, one of those as well. And then, you know, since we're biology math, it'll be June second and fourth. And I received, uh, an email invitation today. Um, we said it's like, um, um, request for some information actually she was able to find last week that, um, of course, KI was requesting. And it was because they were a number of possibility for, um, for Washington. Um, last week, that, um, OSBI was requesting, and it was because they were, um, were a possibility for, um, Washington State, which you may avoid at elementary level. So, um, we're trying to find out, and, uh, work, so we're seeing.
Just to piggyback on what she said, you see the gentleman here in the picture, uh, trying to fly him? He's actually, uh, Paul, but that's Allen Burke, that'd be superintendent to OSBI. So it's pretty neat to have, you know, two students up there. We have eight in all. And I do have a little, look, you can't see the hybrid light, so I'm gonna, um, see if I can blow that up the top of YouTube.
Yeah.
Pretty awesome, and I do wanna thank our teachers who stayed after school for waiting days to help them. Prepare for that. Do the competition. Definitely welcome me on. I'm not sure if you were finished, I just did one.
Yes. There are, it's only not many speakers there, I heard.
And told.
No, there, there was, uh, when we, when we got there, we were referred to as Han natives.
Right.
Um, just because, I don't know, it's Chinese. But there, there were probably, what'd you say, Alan, maybe fifty, fifty or sixty?
Probably about that many.
Uh, Caucasians there, and the rest of them.
Out of five hundred.
Yeah. Now, the other ones, uh, who aren't born here, they just happen to be Chinese, but, uh, so it's not like, you know. So, I'd say that they're all Americans.
Um, I was dropping a moment at the camp at 7:07, and we had recently a bunch of intake, so it's stabilized. Most of my reporter followers, I'll just go ahead and go on into that. Uh, the moment, I have shot, I've kind of been tracking this from month to month, so you get a picture. It changed in enrollment there, mostly, well, all CBA students, they finished up some of their courses. This is the time of the year, they don't accept open enrollment in the online program, so there's a reduction because some students have finished. Other things, just kind of wanted to upage one. If you're sitting in this room, you probably received, you sent out a community survey. Can't post a page in there, we have surveys in each mailer. Um, so far, we've received eighty-nine of those back. So we're hoping for a lot more. I think some people were confused because they thought maybe we just accidentally put two in, in the mailer, but we really put two per household. Thinking that probably not everyone had the same opinion as their significant other or roommate, so, um, anyway, eighty-nine so far. We did receive official approval from OSBI to have our Roverset program at will start in June. So we're looking forward to that. We haven't had Roverset in a while. Um, the years exactly, I know it's been a few. Every spring, we get an enrollment commitment from the institution at the youth camp. And again, they give us the same number as last year, it was seventy-six students. So basically, that letter sets their funding commitment. Um, if we get less than that, we bill them for not giving us that many, because we have the staff reporting that. And our staffing letters have to be sent by May 15th, so by RCW, they're required to get us this letter by April 15th, so. They, I mentioned last time, we've been having some discussions about the safety at the camp, and I saw an article in the Observer about it. Their second round of this meeting will happen tomorrow. So we haven't had some resolutions yet, but it's in progress. Uh, we have two contracts to, um, negotiate, hopefully before June. Um, that are classified, which are bus drivers, historians, secretarial, et cetera. Contracts of that negotiations for that are tentatively scheduled to start Friday, at least the preliminary conversation. And don't get no one, the teacher negotiations will start, because things have been, have been coming on the agenda. It's been a while, because it was near the beginning of March, but our knowledgeable, that I've been updating on, did, uh, finish in the end of the state. That's a little late news now, because it's happened since last March, and I've probably never heard about that too, but, um, that was pretty good. And I don't know if you could hear what Karen, all of what she said, but Washington State achievement award, our elementary school did receive that. And, you know, there's a ceremony for that on April 24th, so. In case you didn't hear, it's one for everybody anyway, even if you didn't hear, so we're obviously very proud of you.
Alright, I think so we're down to twelve. Board member report, make your agenda items.
We gotta be doing a, some kind of evaluation.
Board?
Well.
Myself.
Well, we need to do the board before we do the superintendent, but.
Right. Well, we set the goals, so.
Did we, did we talk about maybe doing one before the end of this? Couple of years?
Yeah, did we talk about you, or? So.
Or self-evaluation?
Self-evaluation for in June. Um, prior to the June meeting, or is it?
Will we workshop, special workshop, or during the meeting?
Well, we'll do a board evaluation. We'll probably do that like in a workshop setting, I would say.
I'd be here the best way to do that.
Maybe the policy and sit down something, decide how you wanna do it.
Um, what's the thing, would you work?
I'm gonna, um, I'm gonna scream. Oh, last day of school, so well.
So it will be the seventeenth will be the board meeting. What's the board's preference, a weeknight or weekend? Weeknight? You wanna go to the tent? Third or the tent?
I can't go to the third.
Okay, come on to the tent. 10th of June. Start at six. Start a little bit earlier.
Self-evaluation. As far as.
We can do it on the 10th, or we can do it before the actual board meeting.
Well, if we got the evaluation too, uh, part two, like, before, we could almost do it before the board meeting. You wanna, uh, well, let's leave it at that, we just schedule for, for the 10th. And then if Lisa finds out that she can just get the information to us, by email or something, we could probably get a chance to, uh, go through that and bring it. We kinda need to set up meeting time though for that, don't we?
Certainly.
Yeah, regular board meeting, we have to come in earlier.
A little, uh, people changing.
I'm just looking to get some communication out, do you guys?
Yeah, we still have another board meeting, so we can, we can tweak it a little bit.
We can, we can give an opportunity to research that.
Anything else? Anything else, Steve? Thursday, I'll be attending the, uh, district forum meeting at Spiffy's. So that'll be a thrill, listen to them all sit down there, talk about a great, and celebrate it.
Do we have our schedule set for?
It's pretty close, I think. I must ask, plus for sure, I've always been working on it, pretty heavily.
Anything else from the board? Entertain a motion to adjourn. Then moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, being adjourned.